About now, we'll call a meeting to order. We'll call a roll, Caitlin.
Ross?
Here.
White?
Here.
Taylor?
Here.
Robinson?
Here.
Baxter?
Here.
Harris?
Here.
Gin?
Here.
And Height?
Yes, here, present.
A quorum is present.
Thank you very much. I'm going to lead us in the prayer tonight. If you'll bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you so much to giving us the opportunity to meet as free men and free women. It's a challenging time across the country and also in our city. Thank you for giving us the knowledge to calibrate and synchronize on a daily basis as we try to figure our way through the COVID-19. Please keep all of our responders and all of our employees safe as they try to continue to give the service that our citizens deserve. In your name we pray, amen. Communications, anybody want to pull any? How about a motion? I got a motion?
Second.
And a second, on the motion.
Ross?
Second.
White?
Here, yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
And Height?
Height? Yes.
Thank you. Mayor, do we want to approve the last meeting's minute meeting?
Yeah, how about a motion, accept the minutes from the last meeting?
Don't move.
Got a motion and a second, on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
Thank you very much. We have a special call, Caitlin, you want to call it?
Yes. This is an email from Amy Field, City Attorney, sent Friday, September 11th, 2020. Honorable members of the North Rock City Council, the purpose of this email is to advise you that Mayor Smith has called a special meeting of the North Rock City Council at 6:05 PM on Monday, September 14th, 2020, at City Hall Council Chambers, North Little Rock, Arkansas. The following will be on the agenda, R-2137, approving and certifying amounts of liens to be filed with the Plassey County Tax Collector against certain real properties in the city of North Little Rock as a result of grass cutting expenses and abatement of other nuisances pursuant to North Rock Ordinance Number 9079. All members were notified.
Thank you very much. How about, do we need to call it?
I'll go ahead and call it, yes, sir. A resolution approving, R-2137, a resolution approving and certifying amounts of liens to be filed with the Plassey County Tax Collector against certain real properties in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, as a result of grass cutting expenses and abatement of other nuisances.
Don't move. Second.
Motion and a second. Am I called a public hearing? Anyone here or online to speak regarding grass cutting expenses? Please come forward, seeing none online or here either one, close the public hearing, on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Next, Margaret, you'll start working your way up. We've got a five-minute program. Everybody wanted to know where we were on the census campaign, and I've asked her to give us a five-minute update on where we are and how we're quickly closing in on the end of this project.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council members. I've had the pleasure of seeing all of you in the last couple of days. Actually, we got together on Friday, and we have gotten some wonderful help from each of you on this program, so we're a little bit more caught up with each other than we were probably last Friday, but there's still a lot of things to talk about. I wanted just to bring you up to date real quickly. You know, we launched our Complete Count Committee back in February. We began putting it together, and in February, we had a kickoff, and we had a really wonderful promotional campaign, and then came COVID, and enough said about that. So, things really became pretty dormant. In May and July, we had a 56%, 57% self-response rate, which means those of us who got online and went to the toll-free number and or filled out our census. So, with that kind of self-response, we had about 56%, 57%. Took June and July to do some planning to really kind of restructure our plan because with COVID, we had to do things a little bit differently. And so, we announced a new plan in early August, and that response rate went to 61.6% as of today. That is from 56%, 57%. It raised between August and September, we picked up about 4.6%. And of course, I'd like to think that it has to do with all of the things that we've been working on. There's been a lot of good help from the US Census Bureau, and we've done, we've reached out to as many different people and in as many different directions as we can with a staff of one, and recently, we've taken on a part-time person. So, we've had wonderful help from all of the city departments, and Mayor, we have almost finished polling all of the city departments to make sure they have all checked with their employees, and most everyone has checked in with me, and everyone is either done, or they did find a few people who needed to fill it out. So, we've accomplished our first goal. We want to make sure that the city first has its house in shape. We introduced a new plan that first week of August, and I hate that we're not going to be able to play the video. For those of you who have not been on Facebook, the mayor produced a video. Randy Jumper, who is here tonight, he's got some more business to take care of a little bit, but Randy was the creative behind the mayor's video, and I wish you could see it, but you can go online and find it either on our website or on our Facebook page. And he introduced not only the reasons that it's important to fill out the census, but we also introduced a new contest. One of the things we decided to do was to figure out how we might get the attention of the public away from all of the negative things that were happening in their lives and all of the sad things that were worries to them. So, we launched a contest, and we're giving away $1,000 in cash. And I wish you could hear Councilwoman Jane Gin's video, but again, you'll have to go online to see it. Facebook, they'll all be on tomorrow. But we are, you'll see on the, are we up? Brady, is that flyer up? What? Okay, good. I wanted to show you all the flyer that was developed. We decided to have a contest, and we said you have to be counted, you have to be a member of the city of North Little Rock, you have to be a resident, and then you have to have filled out your census. Those are the two prerequisites. And if you do, we're offering $1,000, grand prize, for the best all-around video, and then we have categories for businesses, church groups, school groups, seniors, Spanish language, and veterans. We wanted to be as inclusive as we could and reach out to as many different people as we can. That contest, the deadline is September the 30th, so that's coming up. If you have not already done a video, all we want you to do is pick up your telephone and do a quick 30-second video, and just, or 30 seconds or less, and tell us why you think the census is important to you, and tell us that you want to be counted. Our slogan this year is, we all want to be counted, we want to say, "Count me in, North Little Rock." And so, that's what we're doing with this contest. I hope that you'll grab a, grab your mom, grab your dad, grab your grandparent, grab a veteran, grab a teacher, a preacher, it doesn't matter who, get someone to come and join you in a video, and make a video, just do it for fun. You could win $250 in a category, and then you could be in the running for the grand prize. So, we decided we wanted to make it fun. In addition to that, we have a lot of really more aggressive and more serious things that we're doing. I want to tell you that we have just started doing some onsite census outreach. For the last three weekends, we've had tables at at least two different places, and we have reached, Mayor, and council, we have reached over 100 people who had not filled their census out. We've talked to hundreds and hundreds. We've had help from the US Census Bureau, we've had help from some volunteers, and we've had two staff members out each of those Saturdays. And we have signed up over 100 people, which if you multiply that times $3,000 every year, and you get up to about a $3 million price tag that we have actually brought in by going out onsite. We didn't do that early on because of COVID, but we decided it was worth being extremely careful, and that's what we're doing. We sure could use some extra help doing that, too. We could cover a lot more bases and bring a lot more people in directly. One of, we got new partners, and we've got some revitalized partners, and one of our revitalized partners, Dustin, would you please come up? Dustin is Assistant Fire Marshal with the North Rock Fire Department. I'm going to let him tell you the major role that our fire department has played in giving us some amazing help. Boots on the ground, you all remember that?
Good evening. One of the things the fire department does periodically is we go to door-to-door and we hang door hangers for our focus program, where we will, through grant money, which we get the grants through the census, you know, money, we will install a smoke detector or as many smoke detectors as needed in a residence. In order to let the residents know about that, we hang these door hangers. Early on, I guess back in November, when we first started looking at putting the census group together, it was brought to our, you know, it was brought up in a meeting, you know, how can we get some of this information out to the people, the folks that don't use Facebook, don't do social media, don't have internet access, how do we reach those? And what can the fire department do to help? So, through some discussions and through these meetings, we decided that we would kick off our focus program again this year. Well, unbeknownst to us, COVID was going to hit, and we, it kind of got pushed to the tail end. We wished we could have got out earlier in the year before COVID got started, but we were able to, just like the flyer that was up earlier, Ms. Margaret had some door hangers made up for the census. So, Chief Tucker, our chief fire, or fire chief, he instructed the, all the crews to go out, so we had about 160 employees that went out door-to-door, walking the neighborhoods and hanging these door hangers. And since they, since they've gone out in the first two weeks, we had over 60 people call us, and we've been able, our fire marshal's office are the ones actually doing the installations, our crews are going out informing them by hanging the door, the door hanger. Then our fire marshal's office goes back and does the installation of the smoke detector. So, that gives us an opportunity, with me being in the fire marshal's office, when I go in, we do a little safety talk, watch a little video on why it's important to have your smoke detector, but then on top of that, we ask them if they filled out their census, inform them about the contest, and everybody's been real receptive. So far, 100% of the people that we've gone to have done their census, so we're getting a good, a good response. And we're booked up all the way through mid-October right now on people that are wanting us to come to their house. So, hopefully, the ones we get in October, when we talk to them, they had already done their census, because since we have our deadline of the 30th. But we've, if you look at the screen, Ms. Peggy Burrell, that's in our fire marshal's office, she and Ms. Julie Fisher, they worked together on getting the census track numbers. And that far left-hand column over there, you see where it says ward, those are the areas that fall under that ward number. So, on the far right-hand side, you can see whichever ward you're covering, where your numbers are at. So, we've got some that are in the 75, 81.9, looks like Ward 4 is doing really well, but then we've got some that are 33%. So, if there's, if you see your ward up there and you see that your numbers are kind of low, if you have any creative ideas to get out to your people, it would be very helpful. Other than that, that's what our fire department's been, been working on, and will continue to work on until this is all over with.
Thanks, Dustin. Good job to you and all the firefighters.
Dustin has also been a real partner to me. I'm going to miss him when he gets, when he's not with us anymore, because he really has done a lot to encourage, he's done, put together a lot of ideas, and so it's been a lot of fun to have him working together with us. And I really do appreciate Chief Tucker and all of the firefighters who have delivered our message to every household in the city. So, we are doing several things. We've got, our preachers have been asked again to speak out on behalf of the census. We have, the library is making coloring sheets, and we're getting those duplicated, those are going to go to the schools. We've sent flyers through the schools, the school district has been an amazing partner. The Junior League has been great, they are going out on weekends and getting voter registration and doing census. So, the chamber, I just, we just had so many of the partners who started with us who have really come through and helped us, so we appreciate that very, very much. And all I can say is, I wish we could have shown you the initial video, and then the city clerk's office did a video, and you're just going to have to tune into Facebook tomorrow. It's, I said, I was going to tell you one last thing about that video, but actually, there are six things, and they're going to leave you with a smile. So, you need to go on and see our aldermen talking straight talk to you about the census, and they're going to use their videos that we have now produced, and they are ready. We're going to be sending those to y'all, so y'all can use them on your own Facebook page. We want to get the message out. And our trusted voices, our most trusted voices are our mayor and our, and our city council members, so we hope you will continue to help us. If anyone wants to volunteer, if anyone has some good ideas about organizations or groups that still need to be reached, we would love to hear it. We're doing everything humanly possible and getting some great help from our social media. I want to just shout out to Jim Billings and Isaac Henry, they have been really helpful to us, and I appreciate them very much. So, thank you, Mayor, thank you, City Council, and if you have any questions, please don't hesitate to call me, and if you want to get involved, I would love to hear from you.
Thank you, Margaret. Job, great job, thank you very much. Randy, I see you're out there, Randy Jumper. You're over the top good man, thank you for all your help. New business?
New business, R-2129, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution expressing the willingness of the city of North Little Rock to utilize federal aid transportation program funds related to the Central Arkansas Regional Transportation Study Area Surface Transportation Program, STP, and Highway Infrastructure Program, HIP, for the Country Club, White Oak Crossing, and Counts Massey Road Roundabout Project, appropriating funds.
Got a motion by Steve, and a second by, by Mr. Taylor. Any questions, comments, on the motion? Was that a comment?
Someone wanting...
On the motion.
On the motion, Ross? White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
And Height? R-2130, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement with the Arkansas Department of Transportation to donate property for the Interstate 30 and Interstate 40 widening and reconstruction project.
Move for adoption.
Got a motion by Ms. Gin, second by Mr. Taylor. Any questions, comments?
We have an amendment.
We have an amendment.
Okay, state your amendment.
It is to, I'd sent maps out to everyone today. We had received incorrect maps from the, from RDOT, and it's to substitute in the corrected maps that all the city council received today.
Okay, we got a motion to substitute the corrected map, do I have a second?
Second.
There's actually two, there's actually two maps to, that are being amended incorrectly.
Right, there's actually three of them. There's, there's three pieces of paper, everybody got them, and the city clerk has them, so it'll be three pages.
Same principle, okay.
On the motion to amend, Ross?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
How about a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt, as amended.
Second.
Baxter and Height, thank you very much. Any more questions, comments, on the motion?
On the motion, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
And Height? R-2131, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution accepting the bid and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Gene Summers Construction Incorporated for the North Little Rock River Trail Erosion Civilization Project in the amount of $55,115 appropriating funds.
Move for adoption. Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion, on the motion.
Ross?
Wait, Councilmember White's got her hand up.
Ms. White?
I'm having a little technical stuff going on here. I tried to find out today if any FEMA funds were going towards this.
Or any FEMA funds.
If what?
Any FEMA funds are going toward it.
Are any FEMA funds going towards this?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
That brings up a question, Mayor.
I didn't hear you, Mr. Height.
I said, you answered her question, but that brings up another question. If you allow me to ask it, where are we on getting FEMA funds to repair the River Trail?
We're well on our way. You know, Leonard Montgomery would have to give us an update on that, but if my memory serves me, the last notification I got from him is that FEMA has agreed to fund 14 of the 15 projects that we've submitted. And I'm getting a nod, yes.
Can we get, can we get at the next council meeting, then a report from Leonard?
Absolutely.
At the next council meeting?
Absolutely, we'll, we'll ask him to come talk to us. Mr. Baxter?
Thank you, Mayor.
Hey, real quick, it's just going to require that station of the trail to be closed down for a period of time?
Well, I believe we've got, we've got the trail already around the erosion part. Maybe it'll be closed for a little bit, David's out there nodding his head. It'll be closed for a little while. We're not sure how long.
Okay, Mayor, I just, I just asked if we publicized that, you know, kind of...
Absolutely, we'll, we'll spread it all over, all over the world. Okay, where are we?
On the motion, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
R-2132, Councilmember Robinson and Taylor?
Please call it.
A resolution accepting the bid of and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with Gene Summers Construction Incorporated for Ninth Street improvements from G Street to I Street in the amount of $322,470.
Don't move. Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion, on the motion.
On the motion, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
R-2133, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution appropriating funds for Crystal Hill Road improvements in the amount of $140,677.50.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Any discussion, on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
R-2134, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution authorizing the purchase of vehicle equipment for the North Little Rock Police Department appropriating funds.
Move for adoption.
Don't move.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
R-2135, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution amending Resolution Number 8791, 2020 budget to provide funds for the North Rock Heritage Center Permanent Exhibit, appropriating funds.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any questions?
Can we just kind of explain a little bit about what this is going for?
Well, we've literally been working on this for several years on trying to upgrade the museum, if you will, to have a little bit more to offer. And I challenged Suzanne and Anne Clements and Sandra Taylor to come up with a plan and to come up with some money, and that we would try our best to go overboard in matching it. I've seen a lot of cities over the years that have ignored their history, and it's really disappointing. So, they went to work, they had hired some people to come up with, with ideas, they were successful in getting a $50,000 grant, and at that point in time, I said, you proved yourself to me, I'm going to, I'm going to show you what we're going to do, we're going to try to help you. So, I thought we could take a little bit out of this year's budget, a little bit out of next year's budget, along with the money that they've raised, and we can make this a reality.
Can I just say something? One of the things that, you know, when I went to look at the, the different, you know, photos and plans that they had, you know, one thing about North Little Rock, you know, we have the nightlife down here, but we don't have as much during the daytime. So, to me, this is a much added feature for Argenta, for all of North Little Rock. And also, they plan on fourth grade groups, starting this with, with fourth graders, bring them into the museum so that they will know their history of their city, which to me is very exciting.
Ms. Gin?
They're also putting some banners on the front, on the west side and the north side, that they're going to rotate in and out for people that come in from out of the state, you know.
This is a great project, I'm really excited about it. On the motion.
On the motion, Ross?
Yes.
White? Oh, I believe we'll miss.
White has a question.
Councilmember White has something.
Bring my hand. My comment was that when I first heard about this, I was a little skeptical, I thought, my goodness, this is a lot of money, but as I talked to Suzanne and Sandra, I discovered that the entire city is being represented by this, this project, and there's not maybe it's being left out, and there's room for even more to be added, and that was a really big part to me, so I just want to say, my vote is yes.
Thank you. Go ahead, Caitlin.
Okay, Ross?
Yes.
Yes.
White? Councilmember White?
She voted yes.
I.
Okay. Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
R 2136, Mayor Smith?
R 2136?
Or, excuse me, R 2136.
Please call it.
A resolution certifying the amount of a cleanup lien to be filed with a Placy County Tax Collector against certain real property located at sixty-five, sixty-six oh five Windhill Drive in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Call a public hearing, anyone here wanting to speak about sixty-six oh five Windhill Drive? Seeing none, close the public hearing on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
O 2078, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
An ordinance amending the twenty twenty quota ordinance, ordinance number ninety-one ninety-seven, for the North Little Rock Finance Department and the North Little Rock Vehicle Maintenance Department, declaring emergency first reading.
It's been the readings.
It's been the readings.
I got a motion to suspend all readings, on the motion to suspend?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
How about a motion to adopt?
Double move.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
O 2079, Mayor Smith?
I'm gonna have a sidebar just for a moment, please.
Sorry.
Okay, excuse me for breaking away, I missed something on the presentations, and I'm gonna ask Randy Jumper, Randy, if you'll come up and make your presentation. I just got a text from Robert Burson, he said, did you forget Randy? And I went, no, maybe I did, so.
Well, I'm offended someone left my line mark.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. Randy now here tonight representing the North Little Rock Kiwanis Club. We're here to recognize you for your service to the people of North Little Rock for so many years, and the award we'd like to present to you tonight is one that we've called the Charlie Ball Outstanding Community Partner. I know that you've known Charlie for a long time. For those of you who don't know Charlie, and I think a lot of you probably have known Charlie, he was a member of the North Little Rock Kiwanis Club for seventy years. So, his involvement in the community, civic affairs in North Little Rock, I don't know how you calculate seventy years' worth, but we wanted to present this to you, Mayor, and I know you know Charlie.
Absolutely, well, thank you.
And in addition to that, you know, Charlie was a very active Kiwanian, but he was also a big recruiter for Kiwanis, so we sort of have an endowed chair here, we're giving you a membership to the Kiwanis Club also.
Now, thank you very much.
Thank you for.
If I may, I'll make one comment real quickly. I've known Charlie Ball for, golly, maybe all my life, and to receive an award that's got his name on it's pretty special. So, I want to thank the Kiwanis Club for recognizing me and, and putting my name ever so gently besides Charlie Ball, so thank you guys very much. Too much for hiding my shorts.
We didn't see anything.
Well, that was very special, thank you, both of you, that was a surprise. Okay, let's get back to work here.
Okay, R 2079, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
An ordinance amending ordinance number ninety-two seventy-four, which accepted the annexation of certain territory to the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, approved, approved the schedule of services to be extended to said area, and assigned said territory to Ward Two, declaring emergency first reading.
Move to suspend the readings.
Second.
Got a motion to suspend all readings, on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
How about a motion to adopt?
Double move.
Question, Ms. Ross?
No, if Ms. Fields just kind of explained, this is just clearing, clearing up wording, it's nothing to do with any more annexation or anything like this.
No, it's not, it was just that one little part of a sentence that was in the county's order about the abutting streets, abutting, adjoining and traversing streets and roadways was not in our legal description, and the county attorney got in touch with me. And so, before they sent it on to the Secretary of State, we needed an amendment to make sure we had that language in there.
Just cleanup. On the motion.
On the motion, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
O 2080, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
An ordinance waiving formal bidding requirements and authorizing payment to J-Con Incorporated for the replacement of a stormwater pipe at Seventh Street extending from Orange Street to Maple Street, declaring emergency first reading.
Move to suspend the readings.
Second.
Got a motion to suspend all readings, on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
How about a motion?
Double move.
Second.
A motion in a second, on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
O 2081, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
An ordinance authorizing the issuance of a general revenue promissory note, Burns Park Golf Course Equipment Project, Series Twenty Twenty, providing for the payment of the principal of an interest on the note, declaring emergency first reading.
Move to suspend all readings, second.
Got a motion to suspend all readings, on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
How about a motion?
Double move, second.
Got a motion in a second. Ms. Ross?
My question, I'm assuming that they got this off the state bid, is this, or were these bid out, or how was this on these golf carts? I know that we did this five years ago, or sometime around that time, and this is.
If I'm not mistaken, my memory serves me over thirty years, the actual purchase of the vehicles includes forty trade-ins, and it's always been negotiated, and what we bid out is the loan.
Okay.
So, that's what we did on these. When you've got that many trade-ins in, in one deal, it's, it's really, you know, how you try to figure out, put the whole thing together that works so that they'll cash flow. And I might be wrong, but, but our golf carts always cash flow. Might be one of the very few things that cash flows.
I guess, I guess, and will you answer my next question, then what, what would we do with the other ones, and so they were included in the trade-in cost on this, is that correct?
Yeah, and we've had so much play out there since COVID, and we're having to double up, so we're using twice as many, and, and I've seen them, some of them are in such bad shape, they're just wore out. And so, we had to go, I don't see this dying, the, the golf course is in such good shape, and it's gonna get more and more play, so we just had to get some dependable golf carts out there.
I actually looked up the lifespan of a golf cart, and it's five to seven years, so, and then these are getting much more play, so, I just want to make sure that we.
Amber looked at the depreciation schedule and everything else, so, we, you know, she, she's my go-to, if she says it's okay, then it's okay. Do we have a motion?
Yes, on the motion, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
O 2082, Councilmember Baxter?
Please call it.
An ordinance rezoning certain property located at seventy-seven eighteen MacArthur Drive in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, from C three to C four zoning classification, by amending ordinance number ninety-two sixty-three, granting a conditional use to allow for a contractor's office with outdoor storage, declaring emergency first reading.
Move to suspend all readings.
Second.
Got a motion to suspend all readings, on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
All right, at this point in time, we've got a couple of people that would like to make comments on this legislation, first and foremost, our dear friend Joe Reynolds. Joe, you want to come up and give me three minutes?
Yes, I'm Joe Reynolds, and this is Ward Three, and I live in Ward Three, and this is part of Meadow Lane Acres subdivision, and I've lived in that subdivision for forty years, and I've visited with the applicant, and I was at the planning commission meeting when they unanimously approved this, and I represent Meadow Lane Property Owner Association, and we're in favor of it. I've met with the applicant, and I believe it'll be a good thing for us, and it'll be an asset to North Little Rock on a tax base, and, and I understand that, from all I know about it is, the entrance to the property will be from the main highway, MacArthur Drive, there's another road behind it, Service Road, there'll be no entrance from that area, be even no gate back there for them to get into that rear of it, and there will be a six-foot privacy fence all the way around it, and we're happy about that. And the storage situation that you see, I think that's just their trucks and stuff, they won't be storing like junk or anything, I've met with the people, I'm happy with them, and we, we support this, and we'd ask you respectfully to vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. We've got another individual, Chris Robinson, is he here for questions or comments? Do y'all know? Is that the applicant, Joe? Is Chris Robinson the applicant, or do you know?
David Hamilton, it says here with the sign company.
Okay, do you have Chris Robinson online?
Wait, wait, I'm on the wrong one.
Chris, you're up, and give me three minutes.
Yes, sir, I'm just the applicant, just the owner of the company.
Okay, so you're just available for comments or questions, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, let's, let us vote on it. We have a motion, Caitlin?
We need a motion in a second.
Give me a motion.
Motion for adoption.
Second.
Got a motion in a second, on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
All right, O 2084?
Eighty-three.
Eighty-three, give me one moment here. Sorry about that. O 2083, an ordinance granting a waiver of section fourteen, point fourteen of ordinance number seventy-six ninety-seven to allow roof sign in a C six mixed-use commercial district for certain real property located at four-one-eight East Broadway in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, declaring emergency first reading.
Linda, that's yours.
Spend the reading. Move to suspend all.
Okay, and Mr. Taylor seconded to suspend all readings, on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt and seconded, on the motion.
Ross?
Hold it, excuse me. I call for a public hearing, anyone here to speak on O 2083 regarding a rooftop sign at four-eighteen East Broadway, seeing none, close the public hearing, on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Another question, another question.
Question, Mr. Taylor?
Question. No, not for me, for Mr. Height.
Mr. Height, go ahead.
Is Sean Spencer here?
Yes, he is.
Is he available? Can I ask him a question? In the legislation that's, there's four photographs, legislation, and the one in the lower left, the lower, has that big tall forty or fifty-foot pole sign that advertised the Exxon station that was in that, on that piece of property before this, before this Starbucks was being built. Is that forty or fifty-foot sign coming down?
The Exxon station went to the Board of Adjustment years ago when it was first built and got a permission for it, so as long as the sign did not move, it's allowed to be there, so they're gonna switch out and, and put a Starbucks sign up on top of that.
Well, I, I didn't think that, I thought if, if the sign was changed in any way that, that didn't comply with the, with the sign ordinance, to my knowledge.
That'd be true with the sign ordinance, but this was a Board of Adjustment case that allowed a, a fifty-foot sign on that piece of property until it would be, until the sign was destroyed or moved.
Well, wait a minute, let me, let me clear up something from my, my own education then. They approved an Exxon sign there, is that correct?
They approved a fifty-foot tall sign.
With an Exxon sign in?
The, the way the ordinance was written back then, it was, it was to allow a fifty-foot sign. Now, the applicant may have been Exxon, but it would be the sign.[1775.63]
So the sign created, so the approval of the sign created a variance, and variance is run with the land?
That'd be correct. For the Board of Adjustment. Now, if this was something out of the sign ordinance, you'd be correct that it, if the change of business, they would have to come into compliance. But since the Board of Adjustment issued a variance, it goes with the property. I'm assuming that's.
But the property, but the property changed from an Exxon station, convenience store, to a Starbucks. It doesn't matter. The way it works is, if they wouldn't have got a variance, the variance, if the land is sold, they had it signed. So the variance says you can have it signed. It doesn't matter if it's an Exxon sign. So if it's sold, then that right to have the sign goes with the land.
That's correct. Our lawyers and planners are all saying that's correct.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Thank you. Good question. Where are we?
Ross voted yes. So Councilmember White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
Oh, twenty eighty-four, Councilmember Taylor?
Please call it.
An ordinance granting a conditional use to allow a car lot in a C-four zone for certain real property located at two-zero-zero-one East Broadway Street in the city of North Rock, Arkansas, declaring emergency first reading.
Move to suspend the readings.
Second.
Got a motion to suspend all readings. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
How about a motion?
They'll move. They'll move.
Give me a second.
Second.
Motion and a second. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
This concludes new business.
Thank you very much. I'm showing two public comments. First one is Brent Ferguson. Is Brent online? Brent, you've got.
Yes, sir, I am.
Well, you've got three minutes, so talk to us.
Yes, Your Honor, I am. Okay, first, I'd like to say thank you to, I believe it was Captain Allman that I heard on ABF last Saturday promoting the city and their fire availabilities. You know, public availability to come out and look at the people's houses at all and talk about general firefighting, well, or general fire safety. Second, I've got a small problem with your website. I'm sitting here looking at the link. I ran the link off the government page, and it says that the meeting's not done yet, or is not starting yet, or is not loaded. It says this account does not have any events yet, is what it states explicitly. And I've been updating it a couple times, so I don't know if your IT guys can help with that or not. Third, I've been trying to communicate by email with the Public Information Officer at the Little Rock, excuse me, the North Little Rock Police Department, Mr. Green, Sergeant Green. And he informed me last week that people with AOL and a couple other web services are unable to get in to speak with him, and he's unable to respond to us on those services. I know that in the past, I've been able to speak with Chief Flesch, their fire department, when I was trying to find out about some burn permits, and I had no problem. But yet I can't get a hold of the police department with email. I was just curious if there was a reason to rhyme for that, please.
That's very unusual. If you will email me your phone number in the morning, I will ask somebody from PD to call you.
Yes, sir. I just, it's one of those things I've gone down and been talking with, previously with Sergeant Cooper before she departed. And that's where we were, you know, and I got his information. And I haven't been able, well, I never really tried. I always, Ms. Cooper would always be able to ring me back. And I'd go down in face to face with her, but.
If you're not contacted by noon tomorrow, you call me and go, "Hey, Smith, what's going on?" Okay?
Roger that, sir. Thank you.
Hey, Brent, our IT department's all here, and they're gonna check out what your comments were. So thank you very much. Ms. Ross?
I would like to add what he says, too, that sometimes people say that they emailed us with, you know, within the city council, and I don't know if this is other departments. And I have not received emails from AOL, and there's also some Yahoo, the Mimecast, the filters that we have on the city is blocking that, and we're not getting those. And so that's, that's been a problem.
Very possible. We've had to tighten down our, our computers a little bit because of bad guys out there trying to get into our system. If you send an email to any department, and you don't get a response in a day or two, then you call them. That's what the fund's for.
Or council members.
Yes. Council members are the same way.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I know that myself and several others have like prodigy at all. And if, I don't know about the others, but I just find it that I've had this account since back in the nineties. And I just, it doesn't seem that, it seems like there's people out there that still would have them, and they're being blocked from access.
Well, we've got so many parts of our computer system that is very sensitive, all the way from our electric company to our personnel to our PD. So we have to be a little bit more tight than, than most people. So with that, Ms. White? We're not getting you. Start over.
Not hearing anything?
Yeah.
Start over.
Okay. Like Debbie said, so much of the email that are from Hotmail, from AOL and Comcast, a few of those, they go into our spam, and sometimes we don't see them. They're just not, and they're not accessible. And I, and I know they're being filtered out.
Thank you very much. We got one more public comment.
Thank you, Your Honor.
You bet, Brent. Thank you. Thomas Rester? Yeah, he's here. Okay, come up and give us three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Smith and Council. My name's Thomas Rester, and I'm just a concerned citizen that's considering getting involved in politics and things to help the community out. I had a question here. I was hoping maybe you could give me some feedback on is, basically, can you give our citizens an estimate on how much funds are available to offer new locations offering support to the community dealing with COVID- nineteen?
Well, this is a public comment section, not a question and answer. So I don't want to start answering your questions, but yeah, if you'll call our finance department, they'll tell you everything. I don't, we've got money earmarked with grant money coming in and everything else, and she, finance can give you those total numbers.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Bet.
Next, I'd like to thank you for your service to the city and everything that you have done for us in the past.
Thank you very much. It's been a great career for me, and I think I'm gonna be leaving the city in a lot better shape than when I got it. So I'm excited about spending time with my family.
Super.
Thanks for your comments.
All right. Well, I hope I can reapproach the council in the future with some good questions and.
Yeah, remember now, comments, if you want questions, call us.
We just call.
Pick up the phone, yeah.
Okay.
If it's a, if it's a finance question, call finance department. If it's a mayor question, call me.
Okay.
Because I try to call most everybody back in the same day if I can.
Okay, super, sir.
Okay, thank you. I'm glad you're, you're involved.
Thank you, sir.
Any council member have anything for the good of the order tonight? How about a motion?
They'll move.
Got a motion and a second. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Wait, 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 wait. Baxter?
Charlie, did you have something?
Yeah, I just had a quick question concerning, has there been any discussions about reopening the library? I've had a, I've had a couple people ask me about the library. They miss going and perusing the aisles and the, at the library.
We, we're trying to take baby steps over there, trying to look and see what the other libraries are doing. We just had a few that, that got sick at the library, so that might have set us back a little bit. So I can't give you much of an update. I'll try to get something from Crystal, and we'll get it out in the form of email to everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. On the motion.
Okay, White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter? Harris?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.